Twenty-third, twenty-three. And we will first want to welcome all of you here. Glad that you're here tonight. We have a lot of distinguished officers and firefighters and things in here tonight, and distinguished citizens. So we're very happy to have all of you tonight to be in here with us. We're going to call this meeting to order, and we're going to ask my good friend, Brother Jimmy McMillian, to come, Pastor of the Baptist Tapernuckle Baptist Church to come, and offer us our invocation, and afterwards we ask that you stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor McMillian.
Come back. We want to see who you are.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you, dear God, for our town, and, Lord, we thank you for the leaders of the town. And, Father, we pray that you would give them wisdom, understanding, and knowledge. And, Father, we just ask you to watch over them. Lord, give them the strength, the stand. Lord, give them the boldness to stand and stand for you. And, Lord, we thank you for all you do. We thank you, Father, for our policemen, for our firemen, and, Lord, for all the work that they do. And, Lord, I ask you to put your hand of protection on them, Father. Watch over them and their families. Now, I ask you here tonight, Father, you're the blessings upon this meeting. Lord, give wisdom and understanding. And, Lord, we thank you for all that you do. We ask you to touch in work. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Pastor McMillian. Appreciate you. You've been given copies of our minutes, so I'd like to receive a motion and second to approve our minutes for May ninth.
Motion approved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? Ayes have it, and it passes unanimously. Employee recognition, LaGrange Police Department, for motion.
Chief Fivash is going to come forward and do that.
Chief Fivash.
Good evening, everyone. Roughly, I've got a big mouse, so I'm not going to use the microphone. Roughly two months ago, I had the honor of standing up here on a very evening just like this and be as warranted as your next police chief. Since that time, I've gotten to know a lot of fantastic people in this community, but specifically within the ranks of the LaGrange Police Department. Some of those individuals have distinguished themselves even in this short time by their work ethic, by their dedication, by their many years of service to the city in providing a safe environment for all of your families to work and live. So in light of that tonight, this isn't a reward. This is an earned promotion. They've already done the work. It's just recognition for the time they've already spent and sacrifices they and their families have already made to making this community a better place. So at this time, I'd like to ask Captain Dale Strickland and Captain Andrea Robinson to come up forward, please. I'm going to have to crowd together. I've got a little Bible here. Put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand forward. Aye, state your name.
Andrea Robinson.
Do hereby voluntarily accept an appointment as a major in the LaGrange Police Department. I swear or affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public monies due to the United States, this, or any other state, or any political subdivision or authority thereof. I swear or affirm that I am not the holder in any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state that I am prohibited from holding. I swear or affirm that I am otherwise qualified to hold this office according to the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia. I swear or affirm that I will faithfully perform and discharge the duties of my position to the best of my ability and without malice. I swear or affirm to accept and faithfully abide by the law enforcement code of ethics of the International Association of Chiefs of Police as my standard of conduct while on and off duty. I swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Georgia. So help me God.
I swear.
I'll ask your family members to come forward. It's a learned skill, folks, I promise. About a handful.
Thank you, Chief Fivash.
You got a couple more. I'm sorry. I'll hurt.
Don't take your time.
Also have three more, a little bit different rank here. And I told both of these, there've been several chiefs of police here in LaGrange, but we've never had majors before, so that's the first two majors ever with the LaGrange Police Department. So history centers in more ways than one.
Yeah.
Now, I'd like to ask Lieutenant Eric Lawrence, Lieutenant Karen Sanders, and Lieutenant Robert Kirby to come forward, please. Same thing, hard work, dedication, show up, never complain, do their job, just can't give them enough accolades. So same thing, something already earned. Get all place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
I am Robert Kirby.
Do hereby voluntarily accept an appointment as a captain in the LaGrange Police Department. I swear or affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public monies due to the United States, this, or any other state, or any political subdivision or authority thereof. I swear or affirm that I am not the holder in any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state that I am prohibited from holding. I swear or affirm that I am otherwise qualified to hold this office according to the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia. I swear or affirm that I will faithfully perform and discharge the duties of my position to the best of my ability and without malice. I swear or affirm to accept and faithfully abide by the law enforcement code of ethics of the International Association of Chiefs of Police as my standard of conduct while on and off duty. I swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Georgia. So help me God.
I swear.
Okay? Their family members come forward.
Thank you so much, Chief Fivash. And congratulations, and we're so proud of all of our officers. And you all are so most deserving of the honor and the position that you have been given. And I know that he looked very hard, but it didn't take very much because I'm not in the police department. I see all that you all do. So thank you all so very much. The council, all of us, we thank you so very much. Thank you again. We have no public hearings tonight. We have a delegation. Wayne Hall from the Optimist Club, LaGrange Police Department Officers of the Year, and LaGrange Fire Department Officer of the Year, will come forth this time.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. My name is Ralph Howard, and I'm the president of the Optimist Club of LaGrange. Our slogan and our purpose is to act and serve as a friend of youth. In 1951, the Optimist Club of LaGrange was founded by several prominent members of our community. And in 1965, Optimist International created the Respectful Law Program. The idea of the Respectful Law Program came from a meeting with J. Edgar Hoover and the president of Optimist International at that time. Optimist International wanted to create an award that could be used by local optimist organizations to highlight the good work local law enforcement does in communities all over the world. Since the inception of the Respectful Law Program, it has been an important part of the LaGrange Optimist Club. Each year, we have the honor of working with the city, fire, and police departments to recognize one individual from each department that goes and has gone beyond their duties to make Troup County a brighter and more optimistic place for our youth. I'm also happy to have the chance to tell all the members of our community in attendance today that the local LaGrange Optimist Club has been awarded a $1,000 grant by Optimist International Foundation. The purpose of this grant is to support our effort to reestablish the Boys and Girls Club in West Georgia. In order to do that, the support of this community and the surrounding communities will be required. This is our goal for 2023, and we will be asking support from everyone who's interested in our youth. And we all know that our youth, particularly after school, need support and a program. Thank you very much. Now, at this time, it's my pleasure to ask Chief Garrett Fivish to come forward and present an award to the... I'll read the plaque, if I may. Law Enforcement Award, May 2023, presented to LaGrange Police Officer James Jib Davison by outstanding dedication and distinguished service, Optimist Club of LaGrange. Present that to you, present to him.
And while we did this, when I started to come forward... He's got a few words to say about Jim, so you kind of know where this came from.
All right. I appreciate y'all having us here this evening, and I have the luxury of supervising Jim presently. I was recently moved out to the training division about three or four years ago where Jim was already working, and I thought it was going to be somewhat of a challenge trying to supervise somebody that's the same exact age as my mother, but... (laughter) This is pretty good time. Jim has made my movement or adjustment pretty much seamlessly. Jim's been employed with the city for 27 years now. He's worked in the patrol division as a patrol officer and also as a K-9 handler for several years. He was one of the first members of our community outreach unit when it began, and, like I said, he's now in our training section. Jim has a plethora of duties that I give to him every day along with the other things that we have on our plate. Some of those include our pre-academy and orientation training that we hold. He also helps pretty much run all of our annual in-service training, our quarterly training, leads all of our drivers training, as well as our civilian training. We not only have a responsibility of training all of the police officers, we also have several different civilians that work within the police department that were in charge of training. Jim also takes care of a lot of the maintenance and upkeeps at the training center and range when Mr. Frank is unable to get to all of it as well. Jim also coordinates and participates in several other functions throughout Troup County to include our Citizen Police Academy. He holds craze and threat TBAs, we call them. Basically, that is our civilian response to active shooter events and several businesses and organizations throughout LaGrange. Circles of LaGrange, monthly EMA meetings, Troup County School Safety Visits, Troup County School Staff Active Shooter Events, Troup County LaGrange Chamber Safety Meetings, monthly EMA meetings, annual youth academies, and the list goes on and on and on. But with all that being said, the schedule that Jim is required to work is often very fluid, and it requires generally more than eight hours a day. If you've got eight hours of training a day, anybody that's had any involvement with training knows that you've got to show up an hour early, and you're generally there at least an hour afterwards. A lot of those days also include us coming in at four or five o'clock in the morning, conducting a training, training recruits all day, and then doing the same thing that evening. So he does all of that with very little, very little complaining or griping. Does he all know, Jim, know that he's come a long ways? The main thing here is that I want all of you guys to know that Jim has a true passion for what he does on a daily basis, and he truly cares about not only the citizens that work and live in LaGrange, but also the men and women of the agency that we work for. He truly takes every step and gives in the extra effort to make sure that they're getting the best product we can give them. There were several employees that were nominated for this that all were very deserving, but I don't think any were probably as deserving as Jim is. And I just want to personally thank him and congratulate him for being chosen Officer of the Year. I appreciate you, buddy. Thank you. (applause)
Great. My son-in-law, John Scott, who was on the force for a while. I've always admired this man. At this time, I don't see Chief Willet back there. Is he in the house? Oh, he was hiding, nobody. Okay. Step up there, chief. It's a great pleasure to see you tonight. And I have a plaque here. I'll read what it says. Firefighter Award, presented to LaGrange firefighter Lieutenant Joshua Williams by outstanding dedication and distinguished service, Optimist Club of LaGrange. It's a pleasure.
I want to thank Optimist Club for always recognizing. I was a great firefighter for their consummate throughout the year, and I also want to thank Lieutenant Joshua Williams for his dedication and passion that he has for the fire service. This just shows the passion that each individual that we have working for us. This just shows that they do and dedicated to serving citizens in LaGrange. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. We appreciate the Optimist Club doing that. We're very fortunate also to have Ms. Troup County, Ms. Jessica Roberts, in the house. Come, Ms. Roberts.
Good afternoon, everyone. So like you said, my name is Jessica Roberts. I'm the reigning Ms. Troup County 2023. Ms. LaGrange Riley Rugeur is not here with us today, but I just wanted to come and talk about the Miss America Organization. The Miss America Organization is the largest providers for scholarships for young women in the nation, across our nation. And luckily, Troup County has been a part of the Miss America and Miss Georgia Organization for so many years now. So I just wanted to come and show appreciation and support to the City Council and the city of LaGrange and Troup County for all the support that you've given to the Miss America Organization. My personal platform in the Miss America Organization is pause for mental health, which advocates the importance of not only taking time to pause for your mental health, but to use pause, your four-legged friends, to help you heal. So luckily, I have been able to meet some of the K-9s in the K-9 unit when I was Ms. Troup County's Outstanding Tween in 2016. So I am once again thankful for all the work the police department does here, and I am from Columbus, Georgia, and I can't cook, so the fire department there has been very useful to me. I've had like five visits so far, so thank you for all your work as well. But I just wanted to come here today and thank the city of LaGrange for all their work in the Miss America Organization and everything that they do.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. Thank you so very much for representing Troup County. We appreciate that. And thank you, Judy, so very much, Ms. Neighbors, for coming and bringing her. You do a lot of hard work each year with these pretty young ladies. Thank you so much. Now, I understand that some of you were here for the awards and the presentation, so we don't want you to have to just sit here and suffer through this council meeting. If you would like to dismiss, you can. We have some other... Please exit quietly.
You guys like to stay up?
I bet.
Don't empty the bread.
All right, yeah. We probably still be in budget. Real fine. Oh. I'm like, who calling? Yeah, you're actually... Yeah. She's good. And I worked at Troup. I met her at Troup. And she does some stuff on the radio. You know, I'm on the radio Friday nights.
We got to take this. Make the night.
Calm down a little bit. Oh, I don't know. He didn't say that.
Oh, mercy.
He didn't want you to be by yourself, so just to go.
See, now all the seats are clean. Nobody got to wipe them down, did they?
All right. I think that we're ready to go back into our meeting. Council members report. Anyone has a report today? Any council members have reports?
No, sir. No council member has a report.
Okay.
I want to thank Ms. Kelsey for taking the time to lay all the budget out for us and be able to see the book to the law firm because I popped in the office a couple times and seen that she had that stuff printed all over the place. So I just want to say that we appreciate what she did to make it easy on us to understand.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Appreciate that.
And I concur with that. Thank you so much, Meg. And thank you for the pound cake.
I can't show up without it now.
Yeah. I went on my slides too, Meg. I got some to report.
Okay. You come on next door, I'll get you some.
Okay. Mayor, I want to thank you and the city of LaGrange for the event that we had over the last weekend. As you guys have heard and seen, it was probably the biggest event for kids we ever have had here in a while. So just want to thank you guys so very, very much for that and get ready for the next. Yes, sir? Thank you.
Thank you. It was a very wonderful event.
Thanks, sir.
And all the reports? City manager report?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, too. As Mr. Mitchell mentioned, we did review the budget for '23, '24 this afternoon. At this time, we would need to call for a budget, I mean, public hearing on June the 13th.
Call for public hearing. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? Ayes have it, and it passes unanimously. So our public hearing will be set, our budget will be set for a public hearing.
Yes, sir. And secondly, there's a list of items on your agenda materials to declare certain items as surplus. Staff would recommend that you move forward that. It is a list of vehicles and Walmarts and some other equipment. Time that you declare it surplus, we will post these items on govdeals.com.
Make a motion we declare certain items surplus. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? Ayes have it, and it's so carried. Is it passed, Mrs. Kelsey?
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Resolutions authorizing the mayor and the clerk to execute a second amendment to power purchase contract between MEAG and the city of LaGrange.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bowie provided an explanation of this agenda item. Staff would recommend approval. It involves seller agreement in relation to Walmart as an increasing price.
Motion for approval? Second.
Has the motion proper, second to approve? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? Ayes have it, and it passes unanimously. No first reading of ordinance. We have second reading of ordinances annexed property located on 187 South Davis Road.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to annex to the city contiguous real property owned by WSL Real Estate Holdings and located on South Davis Road to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Motion approved? Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? Ayes have it, so carried. Zoning property located on 187 South Davis Road.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city, to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to classify the use of real estate to be annexed into the city located on South Davis Road and owned by WSL Real Estate Holdings to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Motion approved? Second.
Has the motion proper, second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? And it passes unanimously. No board and agency reports other business, appointing a voting delegate, alternate voting delegate, and a flag bearer to the 2023 GMA Annual Convention in Savannah.
Motion, we have Leon Child be the voting delegate as well as the flag bearer.
Has the motion proper, second? That Mr....
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
You gonna be there?
What is that?
You gonna be at the training center, the training in Savannah Sunday?
Oh, this... Nah, I'll be outside on Sunday.
Not this Sunday.
No.
It's...
June. The GMA. Okay.
You gonna be there? You don't have to do it.
It's June 25th.
Yeah, I do it. I do it.
I carry the flag. I let him vote.
All right. So let me amend. I'll amend my request. Motion to have Quay Body carry the flag at GMA, and a motion to have Leon Child be the voting delegate at GMA. Second.
Has the motion proper, second? That Mr. Child would be our GMA delegate, voting delegate, and Mr. Quay Body will be our flag bearer.
Oh, and we also need an alternate.
Let us do that after we carry this motion.
But, yeah, I ain't have no problem with it, but I just want to know what I'm doing, though.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? Ayes have it, so carried. Now give me an alternate.
Motion that we make Nathan Gassman alternate. Second.
Has the motion proper, second? That Mr. Nathan Gassman would be the alternate delegate. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? Ayes have it, and it's so carried.
What date is this?
Jeff, are we okay on the... We're in that motion, and I say, we can go even further?
Oh, we're going... Okay.
I carried it.
Okay.
The first one carried.
Mr. Powell's out on the 25th.
I think we're good.
And voting delegates pick up their tickets from 3:00 to 3:30, and the business meeting starts at 3:30 to 5:00.
Okay.
On that Sunday, the 25th.
June 23rd.
On June, June the 25th.
Leon, are you staying on through Sunday night?
I will.
Yeah, you'll be there. You just hold up the card when I take the vote yes, or you vote no, and then all of the votes go.
Okay.
You guys will be...
Motion, we go into executive session for litigation?
Thank you.
Second, I mean, somebody second, second.
Has the motion proper, second, we go into executive session for litigation, all in favor, aye? Opposed by the same, same sign, ayes have it, and it passes unanimously. Thank you all so very much for being here.